Mr. Thomas, are you ready to take the oath?
Yes, I am.
I state your name.
I, Gaylord Z. Thomas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And will discharge my duties.
And will discharge my duties.
Of office with fidelity.
Of office with fidelity.
That I have not paid or contributed.
That I have not paid or contributed.
Either directly or indirectly.
Either directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
To procure my nomination or election.
To procure my nomination or election.
Except for necessary and proper expenses.
Except for necessary and proper expenses.
Expressly authorized by law.
Expressly authorized by law.
That I have not knowingly violated.
That I have not knowingly violated.
Any election law of the state.
Any election law of the state.
Or procured it to be done by others.
Or procured it to be done by others.
On my behalf.
On my behalf.
That I will not knowingly.
That I will not knowingly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
And I further swear.
And I further swear.
That I will not receive, use, or travel.
That I will not receive, use, or travel.
Upon any free pass.
Upon any free pass.
Or on free transportation.
Or on free transportation.
During my term of office.
During my term of office.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
I think that oath was longer than the governor's. Judge.
We do it special here in government.
Very good. Very, very good. Welcome, Z. Welcome back. Councilman Case, would you like to lead us in the pledge? Please stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our prayer.
Feel prayer with me. Father God, we give you this night. We give you this discussion, this meeting. God, we ask that you would continue to bless us with your wisdom, with your guidance, with your leadership. Father, we thank you for the men and women that you have provided to lead us, to make the decisions that we need, especially this newest member that's been added. Father, we just ask that you would continue your blessing over their lives, over their family's lives, continue to give them the wisdom that they need to carry out the task you've given. Sinjias, then we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I now call to order our city council meeting of Tuesday, January 15th. Item number two is public comments, community announcements or recognitions. Do we have any announcements? We have none. Moving on then, item number three is consent agenda. Items A through D. A is the minutes of December 18th. B is our special city council minutes of January 7th. C is the approval of budget amendment number one that impacts our general fund as well as fire and grant funds. And D is the approval of an audit engagement letter with HBC advisors to provide auditing services for fiscal year 2018.
So moved, second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on those? Submit your votes, please.
Are you voting?
Me?
Yes, you can vote.
Well, that's the way it works.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval of the consent agenda. And for the newest councilman, it's the buttons down here. There's a left and a right, a yes and a no.
It's a doorbell button on yours.
Okay. He knows.
Mine's the only one that's lit up.
Okay. Item number four. Public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2019 CDBG grant application to the Oklahoma Department of Commerce to fund a water system improvements project. Staff, comment.
In the way of introduction, before you open the public hearing, I would just point out, I put at everybody's desk a summary of the project. This is the same application that we did for FY 2018. They're very competitive grants. We did not get enough points to get awarded. In 2018, we had requested $299,999 in grant funds and $301,001 in local match for a $600,000 project. Based on our grant writers' review of the applications, there's no guarantee, but if we change the mix of our match, then it will gain some extra points for us that might allow us to be competitive enough to receive the grant. So we are recommending that we request instead of $299, And then the local match that would come from the Public Works Authority, Or 62.5% would be ours and 37.5% would be grant money for a total of $600,000. These are projects that we need to do regardless of grant or no grant. So any assistance we get would benefit our community. We're doing water main replacement along US 77 over Bird Creek, water main replacement along College from 14th to 11th Street, water main replacement 16th Street from Logan Avenue to College, and water main replacement along Noble Avenue from 16th to 12th. And water main abandoned 4 and 6 inch replaced along Cleveland from 16th to 11th. And then valve installations. We have chosen these particular stretches of water lines because it involves a series of valves that many of them no longer function. They're either frozen or don't work for some reason. So when we have a water leak, being able to shut down a smaller area to control the water leak, we can't do that. Some of these valves are under asphalt. So this will give us an opportunity to replace many of the valves on our water system that either are so old they don't work or they're under asphalt at this time. Or some of them, we may not even know exactly where they're at. And we did budget for this project. And I would be glad to answer questions or Tenny could answer questions.
So basically, what we've done is increase the amount that we're going to pay and reduce the amount of the grant in hopes to gain points to gain the grant.
Correct. We will gain at least two points as a result of that mix. And we think that will be enough to potentially get awarded the grant this time.
At a cost of about $75,000 to get those two extra points?
Um, yes.
Approximately.
Yes.
But we realize we have to do it anyway.
Right.
But I'm making a motion to approve.
I would second that.
Have a motion.
We may be getting out.
We got public. This is public.
These CDBG things, you've got to follow their process to the T.
Right.
So the first thing is to open it up for any public comments as part of the public hearing. Once that's closed, then we can go through the process of proving the documents. I apologize, but they're very rigid on their process.
Okay. So being a public hearing, is there anybody in the public that would like to step forward and ask a question or make a comment concerning this particular project and the grant application? I have a question concerning the timing. What is the approximate timing for the grant application? When do they make a decision on the grants, generally speaking?
I'll let Millie Vance, who is the grant writer and administrator, I'll let her address those questions.
Thank you, Mayor Jilly. These applications are due the end of April. They will ponder over them all summer and make announcements in September. So the bulk of this match money will be spent in that budget year after September.
Okay, all right. And Millie, you've got a lot of expertise in this, so.
Thank you.
No pressure at all on writing this grant.
Thank you.
We just need it. Thank you very much for that information. Any other questions by any of the council?
Well, yeah, can we wait that long on some of these projects, Tenny?
I think we have no choice. I mean, fingers crossed we can get that long. We're having breaks every day.
I see that.
So hopefully, we can close to double our money.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Any other questions of staff or Millie?
I do have one question. I'm sure it's just because you've made this such a general listing here, Leroy, but is it like on paving and stuff? Is that all included in this? Does it just show?
It would depend on whether the lines are under the road or down the side of the road in the easement. But yes, we would have to address, if we tear up the roads, we would have to address that as part of this project.
Okay, that's what I said. Thank you.
Okay.
So I got my motion to approve.
Now entertain a motion. We have a motion and.
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion from the council?
What are we voting on, Mayor? Just a second. Item four was the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Item five is the.
Sorry, you're right.
Action item.
See, we're Randall keeping us honest.
Thank you.
Man.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, let me move on to item number five, which is discussion possible action for adopting the citizen participation plan for the CDBG grant application.
So moved, second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the plan. Any discussion? Submit your votes, please.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to adopt the citizen participation plan for the CDBG grant. Item number six, discussion possible action on resolution number 2019-02 to apply for the 2019 grant application for the water system improvement project that we were just talking about.
What is that? Is that the same thing?
One is the plan and the other is the actual project. The plan is a part of the process that Leroy was talking about. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Submit your votes, please.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. We have.
I pressed no.
Now we got another one.
I pressed yes.
Would you like to amend your vote verbally?
Yes.
Okay, we have a unanimous approval to adopt resolution 2019-02 to apply for the CDBG grant application for the water system improvement project. Item number seven, discussion of possible action on adopting a residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan associated with this water system improvement project. Staff, comments?
We do not plan to purchase any additional right-of-way or anybody's property, so we will not be relocating anybody. But it's part of the process. You have to adopt this just in case that comes up. So again, it's one of the requirements of the process.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to adopt the residential anti-displacement relocation assistance plan associated with the water system improvement project. Item number eight is discussion of possible action on the complex lot split in a lot easement, road easement dedication off of Chris Madsen Road. Jeff?
He's out.
He's gone. All right. Staff, comments, please.
Right, so this would not typically come before planning commission and council. But in this instance, a road easement for Chris Madsen was never captured in the past. And so by ordinance, we would ask for a 60-foot easement, which they've granted here. And then Myers Engineering has prepared an easement documentation, which is the last attachment of your packet. And so they are requesting a lot split, which is taking 3.3 acres off of a remaining 24.75. This is within the zoning that they currently have. Planning recommends approval of this, as well as we had an unanimous recommendation by a planning commission to approve this lot split and accept the 60-foot roadway easement.
So this does not change the zoning at all?
No, sir.
Okay. Basically, this just makes the road legal, a legal road?
Yes, where we can maintenance and access, yes.
Okay, all right. Any questions?
Motion.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We have one motion. We have a second. Have a second. Any other further discussion?
Make sure the record shows there was some concern about a durable power of attorney. The applicant is actually the personal representative of the estate, not acting under durable power of attorney.
Okay, make sure that the minutes reflect that. Okay. Submit your votes, please.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. Unanimous approval for those that are eligible to vote to approve the lot split and the road easement on the Chris Madsen Road. Item number nine, discussion possible action to purchase a 2019 Silverado for the street department. Staff, comments?
The 2019 Silverado truck that we're asking for approval to purchase will be an addition to the street department's fleet. In your packet, I've listed all of the trucks that they currently have. Average age of their current fleet is roughly 20 years of age. Their newest truck is the one that I'm driving, 2017 model. And with me doing the public works director's position as well as the street superintendent's position, it has really kind of hindered. It's taken away from that unit, from the actual department, so much time that it's cut them down, one truck. My goal is to, with adding this truck, is to move some vehicles around inside our fleet and surplus a smaller unit outside of a different department, possibly in our fleet maintenance or our wastewater plant, like an S10 pickup or a Dodge Dakota pickup, keeping one of the larger trucks that we have in the street department around there for use that we can use to pull trailers and things like that. The current truck, I've provided you guys with quotes off of the state contract. The truck we're asking to purchase is from Carter Chevrolet. It's off a state contract for the amount of $28,666. I also inquired about local, just quotes. I provided that with you guys in the packet as well.
Is this a single cab? Does it have air conditioning?
It does have air conditioner. We originally was checking into a crew cab truck, four-door crew cab, four-wheel drive. The 2019 model crew cabs was no longer available on state contract. They only take so many orders.
So that's just an extended cab?
We lowered our deal back to just an extended cab. We lost roughly 6 inches of cab space as well.
Is that four-wheel drive?
It is a four-wheel drive, yes.
Wow. Gasoline, right?
Gasoline engine, 6-liter.
6-liter, okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve. I second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion in the council?
Thank you.
All right. Submit your votes, please.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to go ahead with the purchase of the 2019 Silverado extended cab. Item number 10, discussion possible action to purchase a 2019 Ford crew cab pickup. Staff, go ahead.
This pickup will be a 2019 Ford 250 crew cab. No, it's going to be a, yeah, crew cab. It's going to replace one of our animal control trucks. In this cover letter, it says it's going to replace the 2005 Dodge, but it will replace a 2002 Ford F-150 instead. It is also on state bid. It's from Vance Country Ford. The total price is, it's going to be $29,301.
Now, you state that it's passed its useful life. How do we define useful life? Have we just.
It's been sitting quite a while.
178,000 miles.
178,000 miles and probably lots of repairs.
Yes.
Well, and we need to help animal control out all we can, in my opinion.
I agree.
You've got to have a box bed on it.
We're going to use the existing bed we have on the 2002 to put on it. It's a box, aluminum box.
Right. Ham, dogs.
So it's adaptable to move over into the other, into the newer vehicle, newer frame?
Yes.
Good.
This one's four-wheel drive.
It's a four-wheel drive also.
Which needs to be. Everybody needs to be four-wheel drive.
I agree, we need to help that animal control. I make a motion. We approve it.
Have a motion over here and a, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, please.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to go ahead and purchase the 2019 Ford crew cab for the animal control. Item number 11, a city manager report.
Tonight, I'd like to talk about, we recently went down to the Red River State Conference in deal-making for retail. It was Fort Worth, Texas. Rebecca Blaine, our planning director, grant writer, went, Shonda Price, our economic development director, and myself. I thought I would maybe report some select findings from the International Council of Shopping Centers research that you might find of interest. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, in 2017, almost 87% of all retail sales occur in a physical store, brick and mortar, while e-commerce sales only accounted for about 8.7% of all sales. When polled about the reasons shoppers buy in-store rather than online, 60% of consumers cited the ability to see, touch, or try merchandise. 53% appreciate the ability to get the product immediately. And 33% of consumers turn to stores to be certain about fit and suitability of items. Shopping centers are cultural centers for communities. They bring people of all ages and interests together and are iconic places for consumers to shop, dine, workout, or even ride a roller coaster in some circumstances. 63% of U.S. adults view malls as valuable assets to their community. 76% of adults say that having a good mix of physical retail and service-providing establishments increases the vibrancy of their local community. On average, American adults visit shopping centers 5.2 times per month. This equates to a total of approximately 1.3 billion visits per year for all adults. During the 2017 holiday season, 72% of all adult Americans, more than 181 million, visited a mall, while 67% of those adults shopped, 42% dined at a restaurant or other eating establishments, and 27% saw a movie. The lifeblood of small business owners, from mom-and-pop shops to boutiques, shopping centers attract customers that drive profits and keep them in business. 70% of retail real estate establishments have fewer than 10 employees. Bricks or bricks and mortar versus clicks or online are not an either-or. They are a relationship. 90% of millennials shopped at a physical location during the 2017 holiday season. Further proof that brick and mortar is vital to the future of the industry. Once in-store shoppers are much less likely than they are online to leave empty-handed. Store conversion rates are averaged 25% to 45%, while online conversion is only 2% to 5%. 45% of customers spend more money than planned during in-store visits versus 25% of online shoppers. Some of those are just, we always hear about online sales and how fast it's growing and that brick and mortar is a theme of PS. But I think some of these show that brick and mortar's still here and will continue to be here for quite some time. It's a mix, not one or the other. The next thing I just want to point out, when you try to recruit business and industry like retailers, it's very similar to what you do to recruit young families to the community. The city needs to continue to develop local amenities that retain and attract young families, young professionals. Millennials often pick where they live before they even decide on a job. Communities must develop community amenities to be desirable to these future generations if they want to thrive and grow. Business and industry look for similar places because they want to attract that type of talent as well. Desirable place-making community enhancements are inclusive of and not limited to quality education, quality healthcare, sidewalks and trail systems for bikeability, walkability, parks, such things as disc golf, splash pads, playgrounds, arts in all mediums, both visual and performing arts, places to dine, restaurants and coffee shops, places to congregate, similar to brew pubs, et cetera. Vibrant downtown atmosphere with visually appealing buildings, festivals, and special events. So some of the same things that we're working on to try to attract young families and young professionals in our community are also things that help attract business and industry. I will go through the next slide. We do a two-page marketing piece that is kind of our intro piece or our elevator speech, some people would call it. And Shonda Price, our director of economic development, worked very diligently to put our marketing package together for this visit. And want to show appreciation to her for doing that. And I think it was excellent experience for her professional development. But up on the top left-hand corner, the retail leakage within a 15-mile radius. And we are seeing that a 15-mile radius is our trade area. There is $1,330,000 of sales that go outside of that 15-mile radius. That could happen in that 15-mile radius if you had the appropriate shops and stock and merchandise and those kinds of things. So it does encourage stores to look at our area because there are potential additional sales. One of the things that we have to try to overcome, if you look at population, city limits, our population is $11,718. A lot of retailers can't look past that. They see us as a town of 11,000. We have to sell them that our retail market is more than just our city limits. So that's why we do this, the trade area within 15 miles, there's almost 156,000 people. If you look at I-35 on the North interchange, there's a daily count of 33,000 vehicles. On the South interchange, there's a daily count of 41,000 people that go by our community every year.
Every day or every year?
I'm sorry, every day. Langston University, we don't promote our connection. Langston University, we don't promote our connection to Langston University probably as much as we should, but 2,000 students enrolled at Langston University that come here for recreation and shopping adds to our community. And then we promote some of the special events, like the Lazy Arena. It brings 411,000 spectators to our community each year. We listed some of the special events, like Red Brick Nights, 25,000, Tarot Tour Christmas, 20,000, 89er Land Run Celebration, 15,000. So we do this in our marketing piece to try to get past the hurdle of them looking at us as just 11,000 people, that our market is bigger than that. The next page of the marketing piece, we try to show national retailers, we already have in our community, regional retailers, and then we show the location of various sites. The red ones mark them red, our greenfield retail sites, the ones in black are existing retail buildings. We do an individual sheet on all of these sites for the developers. All of this goes on a flash drive, so they don't have to carry a bunch of sheets with them. When we sit down and visit with somebody, if they have an interest, we give them a flash drive at these trade shows because it makes it very easy for them to put it in their pocket and take it home. The, I just give an example of site number four, one of the sites, what we try to do is show a picture of it, talk about the zoning, the square footage, so that they can at least initially see something about the various existing structures we have. The next sheet shows a actual retail, potential retail site along the Highway 35. It's 30 acres. We show the access to it, and you can see from this drawing, it has good visibility from the interstate and it has good access to get to the site. The next item we put in our package is we just, for sources and documentation, we put in the latest traffic count map from ODOT. And then, in addition to that, you all have seen the coming home video, but we put that on the flash drive as part of our promotion, and when they look at the flash drive, they can pick and choose what they want to look at on that flash drive. We also put on the flash drive a video on the 2018 City of Guthrie Quality of Life recognition video. I was going to play that tonight if Aaron has it ready because I know. Video, what we're trying to do is show them, not only do we have pride in our community, but other people from the outside has recognized the uniqueness and the quality of our community as well, as part of our selling point. The next one, I'm not going to show the presentation, this is just a screenshot, but it's titled "Why Guthrie?", and it shows turnout and crowds at multiple events, shows a lot of the unique sites and locations that might help promote our community. In addition, retail attractions, we use their community profile as the source of our gap analysis, so we put it as documentation of our source for our gap analysis within the 15-mile radius. We use demographics from the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber Regional Partnership database, and we put that in there so that if they question any of the numbers we have on our promotional sheet, they can go to the flash drive and look at those reports and see the source of where we got our numbers. The next one is just to give you an idea, that is the exhibit hall of where all the retailers and vendors set up at this floor show. And then, in addition to all of the vendors that have booths, not everybody rents a booth. Like, for example, the City of Guthrie doesn't rent a booth. It's about $4,500 to rent a shared booth, so a lot of people just work the floor, but you have to pay to get into the conference. We tried to send out advanced emails to try to set up meetings with retailers and developers as part of our process. There was 3,613 people that were at this conference. Of that, 351 were retailers, and you think that there's probably two or, at least two or three people from each retailer, so you're down to about 100 actual retailers. And so it is limited to the number of retailers you have exposure to. There are 972 real estate service providers. Those are a mix of players, but when you try to recruit retail, some retailers do their development in-house and have their own real estate firms. Some retailers use brokers. Some retailers use contractors. Some use development firms. So you have to figure out, once you decide who your targets are, how do they do their development so that you're approaching the right entity, whether it be a developer or the retailer direct? You have to figure out things like, you know, I didn't know until last week that 7-Eleven is split into different corporations, and the 7-Eleven in Oklahoma is a different corporation than 7-Eleven in Texas. So every time you go to these, you learn something new as part of the process. There are 395 public sector participants, so sometimes you feel like it's a very competitive environment, and maybe sometimes there's more hunters than there are game, but it is part of the process if you want to be in the business to try to recruit. From an outcome standpoint, we had an opportunity while we were in Fort Worth to visit with a limited number of retailers directly. We did visit in more detail with five different brokers or developer, development companies that develop retail centers in Oklahoma, that will try to work with them. They put a collection of retailers together to do a center. It can take two to three years, based on my prior experience and input from others, to go from the retail center ideal to is actually finished. It's not a quick process. We will now distribute this marketing package to several target retailers that we have identified that weren't at the trade show or were. So we'll be sending this to several retailers we've identified that might be potential retailers for our region or our community. And then we also, through our networking process, contacting, using our network to contact some of them in person. We plan in the future to develop a similar marketing piece geared towards industrial recruitment as well, that would be different messages and different numbers, but something along this line that we would use in industrial recruitment. Just wanted to give you an idea of the type of materials we put together and a little bit about the process that we try to use to recruit retailers.
Well, it's a great, great package and a great opportunity that I think we are, we're greatly appreciative of the aggressive approach to market ourselves, to retailers, and to light industry on the next phase. So again, congratulations on putting this package together. It's an eye-opener when you start to look at that data in terms of the number of people that actually go by our community as well as visit our community on an annual basis for various things. And I think we all know, we've got a lot to offer, and appreciate you putting a foot forward to help sell it.
Good question. Are you smiling in this picture, actually?
I sometimes slip up.
There was a smile there. No, great job.
It may have been gas.
Great, great, great job. Great, great job. Appreciate those efforts.
You're not going to leave that down.
Okay, that's on tape. All right, any other, any other questions by the council? Okay, item number 12 is comments from members of the council. Vice Mayor Wood, start with you.
Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you, staff, for everything. Keep going, got us through the new year. We're now into the new year. It's all great and going well. Thank you, Leroy, and Rebecca and Shonda for being down there, and that was a great report. It's encouraging. Hopefully, we can bring a lot of people to Guthrie. And that's pretty much it.
Councilman Taylor.
Welcome, Zee. Glad to have you back on the council. I know there's a feeling, a bunch of us up here are really happy to have you back, so now we can throw you under the bus if we need to. No, thank you for being back, being willing to hop up here and take over again. And staff, thanks, guys. Appreciate you all going down to Fort Worth. I'm sure it was such a bad trip. And Leroy smiled, I'm impressed on that one, too. I appreciate all y'all's hard work.
Councilwoman Paget.
Thank you. I don't think I have anything else other than what's already been said, so I'm speechless tonight.
Okay. Councilman Case.
Yes. Well, we've got a lot of good things going on right now. It's really, I'm really enthused to see what's going on. I want to, Tenny, I want to thank you ahead of time for cleaning the roads this weekend when it snows and gets all nasty. Take care of that, Fort Worth man.
Councilman Bothrow. Put a plow on that new truck. Congratulations to the ladies, you guys did a great job. You, too, Leroy. Good to have you back, Zee. Welcome. Yeah, why say that now? We got Mr. James Long in the audience out there, who's going to be on council come April. I'm running again. I'm actually opposed, so.
You're opposed to running?
No, I'm being opposed, but we'll see how that goes. And that's all I've got.
Councilman Thomas.
Well, it's good to be back, and I would just like to say thanks to all of you for your support in getting me back here and your encouragement to put my name in the hat and everything else. And it is nice to see all the things that are really going on right now. It looks like Leroy's got us going in the right direction, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, and welcome. Just a couple things, we talk about all the things that are going on in our community, but just to highlight a couple that are coming up in the next couple of weeks. United Way is, United Way of Logan County, significant supporter of those that need help in our community, always there. The celebration of their campaign is coming up on Tuesday, the 29th, at 6:30 at the temple, and the public is invited. I think it's a $20 dinner and celebration, the 29th, Tuesday, 29th. Martin Luther King Parade on Monday, the 21st, 10 o'clock, starts at the temple, comes down Oklahoma, and I think there's a reception afterwards at the Drexel Center. So, and again, that's open. Sure would love to have everybody involved with the Martin Luther King Parade. And then kicking off the Taste and Tell, the annual Taste and Tell lunch on Saturday, February 2nd, at the Fairgrounds, if you want to come and have some great food. Awesome. I don't know, I think it's about a $10 fee, something like that. Starts at 11 o'clock at the Fairgrounds, Taste and Tell, Saturday, February 2nd. It's a landmark. It's a landmark. Okay, we're going to do something a little bit different here. We've got some timing things that we've got to work out. I'm going to recess our city council, and we're going to go ahead and then move into our Public Works meeting, and then we're going to come back after the Public Works and move back, reconvene and move back into executive session, just so that you know where we're going. But I'm going to recess our city council, and I'm going to convene our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of January 15th. Our consent agenda item is item number two, consent agenda items A, B, C, and D. A is the approval of our Public Works Authority meeting of December 18th. B is the approval of the budget amendment number one, which is the same as the council already heard on general fund, fire fund, and the grant fund. C is confirmation of the city council action where we approve the letter, audit engagement letter for HBC for their services for 2018. And D is the confirmation of city council action on resolution number 2019-2, which is the submittal of the grant application for the water systems improvement project. That's the consent agenda items. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion and a second. Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Submit your votes, please.
All votes, Karen.
See the votes. Unanimous approval on the consent agenda items A through D. Item number three, discussion and possible action on resolution 2019, I'm sorry, 2019-03, designating the source of leverage funds for the CDBG grant application for the water system improvement project.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, Karen.
See the votes. Unanimous approval on resolution 2019-03 to move forward with the water system improvement project or the grant application for that. Item number four, discussion, possible action on the agreement with Millie Vance, still in our audience, Millie Vance Incorporated, for the administrative services for the CDBG grant application for that grant, that fund, the grant.
And just a little explanation, just like last year, if we do not receive the grant, then we do not pay Millie anything. If we receive the grant, she gets.
Seven?
8% of the amount of the grant funds, not 8% of our portion, the match, but 8%. So if we get $224,990, it would be roughly $18,000. And I think if you just think of the amount of people work just in the process of applying, it'd give you some indication of the amount of people work with these HUD-funded projects that it takes to document and administer these grants. So I think it would be very time-consuming for staff to walk through this process, and I think it's very worth the funding to contract with Millie to do that.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, Karen.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to proceed with the agreement with Millie Vance Incorporated on the administrative services for that CDBG grant application. Item number five, discussion and possible action to amend Task Order 131 with Myers Engineering for the Water Systems Improvement Project.
Last year, the engineering fees were $65,700 for these projects, and Myers Engineering left it at the same amount for this year.
Very good, very good. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second. Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, Karen.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to move forward with amending Task Order 131 with Myers Engineering for the Water Systems Improvement. Item number six, discussion and possible action to solicit bids for the three critical service lines that were already presented. That is Warner and Mansour, Rosebrier and Bird Creek, and Park and Drexel.
And this is just simply approving this, going out for the bids. Once we get the bids, we'll come back, and this is coming out of the CMOM that is designated to fund for sewer improvements.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to move forward with soliciting bids on those three critical sewer lines. With that, ladies and gentlemen, our, our, we are adjourned from our Public Works Authority meeting, and I reconvene our city council. Item number thirteen on our city council agenda is consider approval to convene into executive session for a purpose of discussing negotiations with, concerning employees and representatives on the paternal order of the police, and also B, a purpose of discussing employment and hiring of, of city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Submit your votes, please.
All votes are in.
See the votes, unanimous approval to move into executive session, ladies and gentlemen, we will see you later. Okay, reconvene our city council meeting of January fifteenth. Item number fourteen, consider action regarding negotiations with employees and representatives of the paternal order of police. Lodge one oh five, no action taken at this time. Item number fifteen, consider action regarding city attorney, no action taken at this time. That being the last item on our agenda, we are adjourned, thank you.